Alright, so. And this is in terms of replacement policy, not in terms of scheduling, so.
Right, yep. Alright, we're good to go.
Um.
Give me a second, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
Alright, it's time for a new one, cable's all afraid.
Uh, so. Um, um, lecture eight, slide twenty-six. Talks about adding more physical memory would happen to performance. Pico have usual, usually have fewer page faults, whereas LRU and Opt are guaranteed to have fewer page faults. Uh. If it could run into the ladies anomaly, they actually have more page faults. Doesn't really talk about in terms of performance here.
Always perform, but I mean, always is. Like, I'm sure you could, you could game up a situation where. LRU doesn't perform.
Yeah, I am like, yeah, always is sort of a.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, what, what could happen that would make.
So are we trying to think of ways that LRU might be worse than FIFO?
Yeah, so yeah, so the question is, LRU always performs better than, or as well as FIFO.
Yeah, so FIFO, where it essentially staples the pages in the order that they were brought in. And doesn't shuffle them at their touch. So I guess the question is, can we touch the pages in such a way? That, um. We essentially like page fault a bunch, whereas FIFO doesn't.
Ah, I see.
So I know, I know. Well, I think LRU is vulnerable to scans, right, where it's like you just use a bunch of different pages. Um, once and then you throw it away.
Yeah, I think this was in lecture, like she talked about, like if, if the page table stored like three pages, you'd always use the one that's not on there and it just keeps cycling out.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if maybe FIFO doesn't have that same vulnerability, right, for scanning. Um, is that true?
Um.
No, no, I think it'll, it'll still. The question is, can we, can we force an order in FIFO such that? There's, I mean, all we need is like one less page fault than LRU, right?
Right.
Yeah, the fact that says always just makes me feel like this is false.
It's gotta be, like on, on an exam, I would put false unless. I had some reason to believe that LRU was always gonna be better than FIFO, there, there must be a way to construct. Some sort of, um. Access order that forces FIFO to perform at least a little bit better than LRU.
Yeah, alright, we can go with the false six five, I should actually get a piece of paper and record answers since Map's not here.
Okay.
Okay, I got a notebook here. Okay, so sixty-five, we're saying it's false. Alright, sixty-six, LRU with N plus one pages of memory always performs better than LRU with N pages of memory, okay, so I think this was on a slide here, let's see. Adding more physical memory guarantees LRU to have fewer page faults, or same number of.
Yeah, I say it's all, it says not, it could be the same, it certainly. Like, there are, there are still situations you could consider one where it would be the same, it wouldn't be better.
Yeah, I think, I think that it could, it could be equal, it's not always necessarily better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, guys, for the always LRU, um, how about, how about this one? Here's the access order, one, two, three, four, five, five, four, three, two, one, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Uh, wait, one, two, three, four, five.
Five, four, three, two, one. Then six, five, four, three, two, one. See how that works with LRU versus FIFO.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're getting at, okay.
So, yeah, like.
I have no idea if this is actually the correct answer, I'm just like, yeah, I'm just spitballing it.
Right, no, yeah, cuz, okay, so if you had, um. If you had a FIFO policy. So assuming you had, um. If you have room for five pages.
That's fine, that's fine, for, for the first two would be fine for both of them, then, um. First in, first out would be. Uh, one would come out on FIFO, right? And six. Or is least recently used. Five would come out, and then, yeah, with least recently used, you'd be like page faulting on like everyone through, I think.
So FIFO is better in that case, right?
Yeah, it seems so, by, like, by quite a bit.
Yeah, alright, cool, so we found solution, nice.
Yeah, thanks, man. Okay, so then.
For sixty-six, I'm going with false.
Yeah, me too.
That always, it's gotta be, there are situations where it's equal, not better.
Um, sixty-seven, FIFO with N plus one page memory always performs better than FIFO with, uh, N page memory, I think that's false, right, cuz, uh. The ladies anomaly, uh, may actually have more page faults, so.
Yeah. False.
False. Excuse me.
I'll say, it's, it's that, also that always word is always a trip up, it's like, well.
Oh geez, uh, we didn't go through all the, the answers for the ones above it yesterday, and I don't remember what we answered for all of them, but, oh, we can just do the.
I have it written down, actually.
Do you? Okay, do you wanna go through them?
Sure, yeah, um, do you have the answers pulled up?
Yeah, yeah, I can look at them here, I just gotta get to the right section, um. Yeah, okay, so, uh, thirty-eight, the heap and stack are statically allocated portions of a process, uh, processes address space, the answer should be false, they're dynamically allocated, they're, yep. Cool. Uh, thirty-nine, uh, the address space for process contains all of physical memory, the answer should be false, uh.
Good there.
Forty, the dynamic relocation to OS, with dynamic relocation, the OS determines whether or where the address space of process is allocated in physical memory. Um, that is true, the OS manages mapping between virtual and physical, the OS allocates space and physical memory for each address space.
We answered that right, but I did have a note saying that, uh, in general, we had consensus, people should go over dynamic relocation.
Okay. Um, forty-one, two different address spaces that do not share any pages must contain different valid VPNs from one another, um, that is false, two different address spaces can have the same valid virtual page num, pages. As one another, a VPN is interpreted in the context of the current address space.
We're correct there, too.
Okay. Uh, an MMU converts physical addresses to logical addresses for user level processes, false, converts logical to physical.
Good, good.
Um. With, forty-three, with segmentation, the address space of each process must be allocated continuously to memory, um, false, just each segment must be contiguous. I think, I think you were, you were the one pointing that out the other day.
Yes, yeah.
Um. With segmentation, each segment has its own base and bounds, this is number forty-four, um, this is true, each segment is defined by a starting location and a limit.
Yep, good.
Uh, forty-five, with pure segmentation and no other support, fetching and executing an instruction that performs a store. Uh, from a register to memory will involve exactly four memory references, this is, uh, false, with segmentation, no extra. Memory references are needed for address translation, since the base and bounds of each active segment can be kept in a register, so one reference to fetch in the instruction and one reference to do the store. Uh.
So we had the correct answer, but for the wrong reason.
Yeah, we were saying it was five, weren't we?
We, yeah, for some reason, we were thinking that there were more.
Okay. Um.
Go back over that.
Yes, I think pure segmentation, I think, uh, is something that would be nice to get like a little bit more of a handle on, it's like, like it doesn't seem to have any, um. Explicit mention of it in the lectures.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's also one of these words, like, there's gonna be probably a true false question on it.
Yeah.
Looking at the rest of the exam doesn't seem like, um. Paying it too much mind, but yeah.
Um, okay, number forty-six.
There's lots of different variations on similar concepts, and it's hard to keep them all straight.
Yeah. Uh, so the number of virtual pages can be different than the number of physical pages, this is true, page sizes need to be the same, but not number of pages.
Good.
Um. Forty-seven, if ten bits are used in a virtual address, does it designate an offset within a page, each page must be exactly one kilobyte, uh. This is true. Ten bits of offsets, two to ten bytes can be addressed for each page, one kilobyte, okay. Uh, forty-eight, if a physical address is twenty-eight bits and each page is four kilobytes, the top fourteen bits exactly designate the physical page number, this is false, twelve bits minus. I mean, twenty-eight bits minus twelve bits required for four kilobyte pages equals sixteen bits, not fourteen.
Yeah, we have that right.
Alright, um, if a virtual address is eight bits and each page is thirty-two bytes, then each address, uh, space can contain up to eight pages. Uh, this is true, eight minus, eight bits minus five bits, uh, required for the thirty-two byte pages equal three bits for the VPN, two to the third is eight virtual pages. Um. See, given a constant number of bits in a virtual address, the size of a linear page table decreases with larger pages, um. True, if there are larger pages, then there must be fewer numbers of pages, fewer pages, fewer entries in the page table, smaller page table.
Yep, that's, uh, that's true, and that's what that diagram, um, is up there.
Oh, yes.
Session planning, the one that's unreadable.
Uh, I'll be right back, I got, uh, get the door. Okay, sorry about that, have a, uh. Friend drop off some chili for me. Um, okay, uh. We're on fifty-one, given a, no, we just did fifty-one, right?
Uh, no, we just did fifty.
Okay. Uh, fifty-one, given a fixed page size, the size of a linear page table decreases with a smaller address space, um. Wait. Okay, uh. This is true, with smaller address space, there are fewer pages, which means a smaller page table.
Yep.
Um. Given a twenty-bit virtual address and one kilobyte pages, each linear page table will consume one kilobyte. Um. This is false. Told on a cover sheet to assume four byte page table entries unless otherwise specified. Twenty bits minus ten bits for one kilobyte page equals ten bits, two to ten entries. Uh, so two to ten times four bytes equals four kilobyte pages.
We had that right, too.
Okay. Um. Fifty-three, compared to pure segmentation, a linear page table doubles the number of memory references, assuming no TLB. Um. True, a linear page table is kept in main memory for each memory reference in the application. Now, no need to look up virtual address to physical address translation, uh, need one VPN to one PPN mapping. Um.
Right, okay, so that's the bit we were confused about, because we knew that it would be more, and we weren't sure. Um, whether it would strictly be doubled, the number of memory references, and so that's what we need to know.
Okay.
We still got it right, we were so confused there, but that makes sense.
Um, fifty-four, a workload sequentially accesses data has good temporal locality, um. Let's see here, uh, false, sequential accesses the next address nearby in the space close to the previous reference would be accessed spatial locality is the correct answer. Um. On a TLB miss, a new page in physical memory is allocated by the OS. Uh, false, on a TLB miss, the page translation must be found in the page tables.
There you go.
Cool, uh, fifty-six, a page fault occurs if the valid bit is clear, uh, equals zero in a PTE needed for memory access. Um, this is false, on a page fault, the present bit is clear, indicating that the page is valid, but swapped out to the backing store.
Okay, so we had it correct, but we also had, um, a note. To go over. Um. We were confused about the difference between the valid and the dirty bit. Where they all are and what they all do succinctly, there was hard, it was hard to find just answers for each.
Be, between, uh, I'm sorry, the valid, the dirty bit, and that was it?
Valid, dirty, and present, I believe.
Okay, valid, dirty, and present, okay. Um.
We, we, we should, uh, somewhere write out just a clear explanation for each. And perhaps not, that I did.
Down. Okay, um. Fifty-seven, with paging, a single physical page can be shared across two address spaces only if they share, only if they had the same virtual page number in each address. Um, let's see here. This is false, any VPN can point to the same, uh, PPN across different address spaces.
Yep.
Okay. A multi-level page table typically reduces the amount of memory needed to store page tables compared to a linear page table. Uh, fifty-eight here, uh. This is true, with multiple levels, there are regions of sparse address space that are not currently valid, due to the space between the heap and the stack, and the page table for those regions do not have to be allocated.
Yep, all good.
Cool. Uh, given a two-level page table and no TLB, exactly three memory accesses are needed to fetch an instruction. Uh, true, one lookup in page directory that is stored in memory, outer level page table, uh, two lookup page table pointed to by page directory entry, three actual instructions at calculated physical address.
Yeah, that's good.
Cool, um. Sixty, in memory hierarchy, a backing store is larger than the memory layer above that uses the backing store, uh. True, the layer beneath another in memory hierarchy is usually larger and cheaper per byte, but slower than the layer above.
Good.
Uh. When the dirty bit is set in a page table entry, the contents of the TLB entry, uh, do not match the contents in the page table. Uh, this is false, dirty bit means the page in physical memory does not match the version in the backing store.
We're good there, but, uh, I guess again, we just wanted to go over what all those.
Yeah.
Best work.
Um. If a clean page and a dirty page have both been accessed recently, the page replacement algorithm should replace the clean page over the dirty page. Uh, this is true, it is less expensive to replace the clean page, since its contents can just be thrown away, whereas the changes to dirty page must first be flushed out to the disk before the page can be reused. Okay.
We did have that correct, but it took us a while to arrive at that.
Yep, and I think, I think our reasoning was a little different, it wasn't that the dirty one must be written before it can be flushed, it was just that the. Like. I think I was saying that we just get rid of the clean one, because it, its contents are still the same on the thing, so.
Right, it, it makes sense, if you know, uh, in your head what the dirty bit refers to, it's that, the, there's a difference. In memory versus what's in the backing store, and then you would have to write it out to reconcile that, it ma, it makes sense, but.
Alright. Um, sixty-three, TLB miss is usually slower to handle than a page miss, this is false, TLB miss just requires accessing RAM, page misses require accessing next level of backing store.
Good there.
Okay, um. A different user level process should be scheduled when a page miss is being handled, um. True, since this process is blocked waiting for page miss, which will take a while, another ready process should be run, I think we, we had this one correct, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, because, uh, going out to memory is, uh.
Yeah, there's no point in waiting.
Is an I/O.
That disk read, yeah, just keep going on that stuff.
Uh, least recently used, always performs as well or better than FIFO, um. This is false, you can extract workloads where FIFO does better, whereas sort of same as LRU, and I think, yeah, uh. So, LRU with N plus one pages of memory always performs better than LRU with N pages of memory, this is, uh, false. LRU performs equal or better with N plus ones, the extra page might not help. Uh. FIFO with N plus one page memory always performs better than FIFO with N page memory, uh, false, due to the same reason as above, and due to the ladies anomaly, okay.
Alright.
Cool, so that's that section, um, on the part five here. Just gonna drink some water quick. Okay. So, assume you have an architecture with one kilobyte address spaces and sixteen kilobytes of physical memory, assume you are performing dynamic relocation with base and bounds registers, the base register contains, uh. Hex one A C F, uh, which is the decimal sixty-eight, sixty-three, bounds register contains, uh, two ninety-two in the decimal. Um. Translate each following virtual address spaces to physical address spaces, so. Virtual address space, uh, hex nineteen E. Um. So what do we do here?
Appears to be beyond our bounds register, so that would be a segmentation violation.
Yeah, okay, um, and we just got that simply by, uh, looking at the, the bound registers, two ninety-two decimal, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, going with D, segmentation violation. Uh, sixty-nine, virtual address, hex seven D, decimal one twenty-five is physical address, um.
I get my hex calculator out. Easier to deal with. Seven B plus the base registers, one A C F. So that should be. My calculation, it should be B. Uh, the hex address, one B, four C.
Okay, for these, are you just adding the two, like, are you adding the virtual address to the base register?
Yep.
That's it?
Yeah, it's within the bounds, and it's just then. Doing that addition, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so.
All you have to do is base and bounds.
Sixty-nine is B, um. Virtual address, excuse me, uh, hex E E, decimal two thirty-eight, um. I really, uh, I really dislike adding and subtraction and stuff in hacks.
Yeah, um. Um, it's looking like this is none of the above, doing. My, let's see here, my calculation here is showing, uh, one B B D.
Yeah, one B B D, okay, so E, none of the above for seventy.
Of. And that was it for that section, yeah, so we just go over those real quick.
Okay, uh, so you gotta find which sections are mismatched.
Based on what, um. The answer was to the question about having notes, I imagine also wouldn't be a big deal to have a calculator out, so maybe having a hexadecimal calculator would be advantageous, if we're gonna have questions like this.
Yeah, uh, cuz adding is by hand, it can be a pain.
It's really frustrating and slow to do by hand.
Alright, so sixty-eight, should have been segmentation violation, we got that, um, address four one four is greater than the bounds, um. Sixty-nine, B, so, yep, we got that, um. And then seventy is none of the above, yes, this is, this is a fairly easy section, is literally just adding hacks.
Thinking about it, too, since it shows decimal everywhere, you could probably pretty easily determine what these were without doing the hex calculations.
Oh, that's true, you could have just added the decimals and looked at the decimal values, yeah.
So you didn't really need a calculator, but to be pedantic about it, do it properly, then.
Yep, alright, uh, yeah, that's a, seems like that section's gonna be kind of a gimme if we get that on the exam.
Yeah.
Um, alright, let's see. It's kind of small, let me increase the size here. Alright, part six, reverse engineering the page table, two points each. Assume dynamic relocation is performed with a linear page table, assume a system with the following parameters, address space size is thirty-two kilobytes, physical memory size is one hundred and twenty-eight kilobytes, page size is four kilobytes. Uh, assume you're given the following trace of virtual addresses and the physical addresses they translate to, you can reverse engineer the contents of the page table for this process, um. So. Virtual address. Uh. So what do we have to do here, we have to determine. What the size of the offset, right?
Yeah, so we know our page size is four kilobytes, so that would be two to the twelfth, or, um, three hex digits.
So.
Our first.
So like.
Digit is going to be the page, and our last three are going to be the offsets.
Okay.
A little line or something down these.
Uh, I don't have like an annotation for this, um.
Okay, I've got it open on my iPad, which makes it easy to do, but, um. Like on the exam, it's something.
So ta, page table entry zero. Virtual address, physical address.
Okay. So, oh, I'm trying to. Um. Zero. So I'm thinking it's valid, uh, it's B. Uh, cuz if you look in the virtual address, the last one in that trace that we're given, um, the, the last three hex digits are zero eight four. And it maps to a physical address, D zero eight four, and.
Okay.
So that, that zero before to the left of the zero eight four is your. Um. Is your page table entry, so you're looking at page table like two zero, and it.
Oh, wait, hang on a second. Oh, wait, hang on a second. When, when you're doing these, don't you just concatenate them, right, and so? If, uh. We said that the, the, the page was, was three bits, right?
The, the, the offset, or, yeah. So the offset to, to go through your pages is, is three, um.
So if it was, if we just concatenate them, wouldn't it just be, wouldn't it be D zero zero eight four then? Like, I'm gonna, I'm not really, I admit, I'm, I feel like I kind of bumbled through these a little bit, um, but when I was doing the quizzes, there was one of them. There, like. They had two hex digits in the thing instead of.
Right, because yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a trailing zero here, although.
Alright, we can mark it down as, we can mark it down as B, um.
That is a good question though, yeah, why is that like that? Cause you're right, that, um.
Um, okay, so page table entry one.
D zero zero, yeah, how does that work out?
We don't have anything up here for page table entry one, correct?
Um, no, so none of the above, contest cannot be determined from this.
From this address trace, yeah, so I think D.
Yeah.
Um.
Two, we do have two.
That's two. Um, should be valid P F N zero X one A.
Yeah, um. Yeah, you, you, you have me wondering now about those, about that trailing zero.
Alright, take care, man.
Thanks for coming in.
Um, yeah, so.
Makes me think that seventy-one is wrong, cause looking at this one, um.
It is just concatenated right at the end, they just slam it on there.
Yeah, so it, one of these two has to be wrong.
Well, we don't, cause we don't. I feel like in all the examples, we didn't add any hex digits together, we just like replaced.
Right.
Um.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at the answer for seventy-one.
Okay.
Yeah, seventy-one is wrong, cause there's that trailing zero.
Okay, so it.
Right, so it's none of the above.
Seventy-one should have been E?
It should have been E.
Okay, and then so seventy-three, seventy-three we are thinking is just zero X one A then?
Yeah, so seventy-three should be correct, it should be zero X one A, I think.
Okay.
Did that answer or anything, but.
Um, page table entry three, so, uh. Should be just five, right?
C.
So.
This is a zero D eight, so five, it should be just five. So.
So, okay, but is it valid of none of the above but valid? Or is it invalid or page table does not contain entry for this V P N?
Uh, no, it shouldn't be, I think it should be none of the above but valid.
Okay.
It should be. There should be a valid physical frame number that's, uh, hex five.
Yeah, cause it, it does get, we got a virtual address that it does get to a physical, right, yep, okay.
It has to be valid, so yeah.
Okay.
It's just not, it's not listed.
So table entry four, we're looking at, uh. Zero X A. So, uh, A, yep.
Cool, alright.
Um, five.
It's valid.
Invalid, so this one is C.
Yep, that's a gimme, um.
Uh, six, uh.
Zero X three.
Zero X three, yep, so A.
Not listed, so we can't determine it.
Um, seventy-eight, you're saying is D?
D, yep. And eight is also not listed.
Correct, so, uh. D. Okay, um. Let's just kinda. I think, I think for this section, we can just go through and just rapid fire check, it seems like we got a pretty good handle of this here. Uh, so seventy-one. E is correct, uh, seventy-two, uh, D is correct, seventy-three, B. Seventy-four, E, seventy-five, A, seventy-six, C. Seventy-seven, A, seventy-eight, D, and seventy-nine says C. Only eight virtual pa-
Oh, you know what, I bet we're.
It's cause it only contains. Eight virtual pages, zero through seven, so there is, that's, it's too many virtual pages, and so. Is that, is that.
Right.
Would have been thirty-two divided by four gives us eight pages, right, so the address space size.
Our address space size is two to the fifteen, our page size is two to the twelve bits, so if you subtract those.
You get three bits, which gives you eight possibilities, pages zero through seven, okay, so. Yeah, I think the gotchas for this section are making sure, you know, it's not going beyond the page. Entry bounds or like how many pages you can possibly have, and then don't forget if there's a trailing zero, so the, what was it, the? Um. P P N her, uh. What, which one of these do we use to determine that is, uh, the three trailing bits is what needed to get added on, was it, uh?
Seventy-one is. I, I'm sorry, the three, three trailing bits?
So like, from the address space, physical memory size, page size, we had to determine, like. How many, how many bits were like used for the, uh, like which side of the thing, right?
I see, yeah, 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 so the, um. So you, you, you have to determine the pa- you needed the address space size and the page size, you can exo- you can ignore the physical memory size.
Okay, so it's, um, address space size minus page size in, in the bits.
Yes, because that is what, uh. Comprises your virtual address.
Okay. Cool. Yeah, so, alright, not a bad section there, um. So part eight, hitting or missing the T L B, the following questions ask you to calculate the miss rate or hit rate for the T L B. Assume you have a virtual address that requires sixteen bits and there are five hundred and twelve possible virtual pages per address space. You should can ignore all instruction references, I E. do not consider how they impact the contents of the T L B, assume the raid. The array is page aligned, okay? Assume you have a one-entry T L B, assume the running process sequentially access, accesses contiguous four byte integers. An extremely large array starting at index zero. Uh, what will be the T L B miss rate, um, sixteen, wait.
Sequential access.
Is there eight? Bits in a, uh, there's eight bytes in a bit, right?
Yes.
There are five hundred and twelve virtual pages per address space. Uh. I guess I'm a little confused on how to do this, actually.
Okay, so. The process sequentially accessing contiguous four byte integers. An extremely large array starting in, okay, so if you, basically if you, if you were iterating over this entire array, um. How often are you going to miss? Okay, so well, okay, so we have a virtual address that's sixteen bits.
There are five hundred and.
And then, so yeah, there are five hundred and twelve virtual pages, um, so we can figure out, uh. Two plus five hundred and twelve, that's two to the, two to the ninth is five hundred and twelve. So, that means our virtual address looks like, um, two to the ninth bits. For, for the page and then two to the seven bits for the offset. Okay. So that means we have a hundred and twenty-eight, uh, yeah, two to the seventh is a hundred and twenty-eight, right?
Uh, yeah.
So it means we have a hundred and twenty-eight. Hundred and twenty-eight bits. In, oh, a hundred and twenty-eight bytes.
A page?
And each page, yeah.
Okay, and so if they're four byte integers, it'd be one twenty-eight divided by four, right?
Yeah, so we should miss one in every thirty-two times.
One every thirty-two?
We check that now, so that we don't go through and do the entire.
Do everything wrong? It's eighty.
Yep, yeah, that is correct.
Okay. Um, and so what we did there is we took, we figured out how many bits. To make five twelve, subtracted that from sixteen to get the bits for. The page size and then converted that to bytes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, alright, uh, so eighty-one, assume you have a four-entry T L B. With, uh, uh, least recently used replacement for the same workload as above, what will the miss rate, uh, in the T L B? Well, so every thirty-two, it will. Get a new page. Right, but it has to do that four times?
But we're never going back, we're, we're iterating just like in a straight line, we never go back.
Oh, that's true, that's true.
Same miss rate, every, it doesn't matter how, we could have a million.
Yeah.
T L B.
It says.
Every time.
You're right, it just says it's an extremely large array, yeah, and it's not going back, yeah, so D.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Assume you have a one-entry T L B and the running process accesses every fourth element, I E. every fourth. Four byte integer in the, uh, array, index zero, then index four, then eight, so on. Uh, what is the miss rate for this access pattern, isn't it? One and, wait, when it just missed every time?
Essentially divide our miss rate by four, so it should be, uh, it should be one and eight.
One and eight?
Yeah. Just. You're, you're removing four valid accesses from the T L B from every, every lookup, so. It should just be one and eight, I think that.
Okay.
Simple.
Um. Wait. I'm getting confused, sorry, uh.
That's alright.
One T L B entry consists of how many pages?
One T L B entry, uh, only maps to one page.
Oh, it has a hundred and twenty-eight bytes, I see, so, yeah, every four bytes, okay, so, yeah, that makes sense.
Skipping over four, we're just not taking advantage of, you're taking like a fourth of the, of an advantage as it were before, so one and eight miss rate.
Okay, that makes sense, uh, assume the running process repeatedly accesses every four byte integer. In a one hundred and twenty-eight integer array in a loop, I E. access element zero through one twenty-seven. Then elements zero through one twenty-seven again, over and over and over. To have a hit rate that approaches one and one, at least how many entries must be in a T L B, assuming the T L B uses L R U? Um, wouldn't it just be? Uh. It would be four, right, cause like if it, each of our. Pages contains a hundred and twenty-eight bytes, it's a hundred and twenty-eight numbers, wouldn't we just need four pages?
Hundred and twenty-eight bytes, hundred and twenty, yes, yeah, that makes sense.
So it should just be four, D?
I believe it should be four.
Okay, um, then eighty-four, if T L B contains one less entry than the number of entries you calculated for the previous question. What will the T L B hit rate be, so it's the hit rate, um, assume the T L B uses least recently used, um. So. That means that every fourth one would need to go and get a new page, right, so should be three out of four?
Um.
Or. Um.
Okay. If it used, if it, if it uses the least recently used place of policy, so we have. Four pages that we're actually looking at, and we only have three slots in our T L B. So, come to the three and four. Goes through one, two, and three.
It goes one, two, three, and then it's four, and it drops one.
Four, so we drop one.
And then.
Then we'll wrap back around to one, and it'll drop two, and put one in it. Oh, so it's gonna be zero, it's, it, it can't deal with that.
Yeah. Yeah, cause the first, the first three are gonna be misses, and then. Yeah. Okay, so zero?
I'm going with zero.
Okay. Uh, assume the running process repeatedly accesses the first four byte integer of each page of an array that fits on eight pages. I E. in a loop. Uh, assume the T L B has exactly eight entries, the T L B uses least recently used and the ta- T L B does not support A S I Ds. Assume the O S performs a context switch to another process that runs for only one memory reference. I E. one address translation switches back to the original process, what will be the hit rate of the next iteration? Through the loop of the original process, I, I'm not gonna lie, I'm completely lost on this one.
Okay, uh, I'm thinking that this is a bit of a trick, uh, question, so this T L B doesn't support. Uh, A S I Ds, so that means that we have no way of knowing, um. Will we switch to another process, whether or not, uh, we are allowed to access the entries in our T L B.
Okay.
At least do, so that means it has to be flushed, so the, the hit rate for the next iteration for the loop of the original process is gonna be zero. Since our T L B would have had to be, been flushed.
Yeah.
Yeah, the O S has to flush it for, um, security.
Okay.
I believe.
Eighty-five, oh, I wrote down zero for the last one, so the letter D, so it's D for eighty-four and D for eighty-five. Okay, uh, same in that section, let's just run through them, um. Let's see, this is, this section, so, uh, eighty-seven should have been C one over thirty-two, I think we already checked that one. Um. And then eighty-eight should be D one over thirty-two, we got that. Uh, eighty-nine should be, oh, I'm reading off the, the wrong numbers, um, sorry.
Alright, I'm following.
Uh, so eighty-two should be, uh, B one over eight. Um, eighty-three should be D four, we got that, eighty, uh. Four should be. It says eighty-four should be E?
Should be E, okay, so we got that.
Got that one wrong, so it has like a big explanation here, so it says if the T L B has only three entries, then with L R U replacement, the. V P N to P P N mapping for the first access to each page will be a miss, so that's the first three are, are misses. Thus, the same case as the first two T L B questions, but hit rate instead of miss rate. Hit rate for thirty-one out of thirty-two accesses. Right, it a hit rate, so shit, it should hit for thirty-one out of thirty-two accesses. Huh?
Four byte integers, and we have the same, so I don't understand how that's possible.
So, yeah, let's see.
Four byte integers and we have a hundred and twenty eight byte pages, that means we need to have four pages of memory that we're accessing, assuming everything's aligned nicely.
Oh, well, okay, so the first, the first load, what a loads page will be a miss, right, for the first. One, right, but then it'll hit the next thirty one integers, and then it'll be a miss, loads the page, hits the next thirty one integers.
Right.
Okay.
It'll load it in and yeah, that makes sense, I got it.
Okay, so uh eighty four should have been E or the above. Um, alright, uh eighty five, it should be zero. If there are no A S I Ds, then the T L B is flushed, uh. Every entry is invalidated on the context switch, the result. When this process is resumed, another previous entrance in T L B, thus every access since each access in loops is a new page will be a T L B miss, okay? Cool, um. So this last big part, I'm gonna zoom out a bit on this.
Oh, that's nasty, okay.
Um, let's see, so assume dynamic relocation is performed with a two level page table with no T L B. Assume the page size is a unrealistically small thirty two bytes. The virtual address space for the current process is one thousand twenty four pages. Or thirty two kilobytes and physical memory consists of one hundred and twenty eight pages. Thus, a virtual address needs fifteen bits, five for the offset, ten for the virtual page number. And a physical address requires twelve bits, five for the offset, seven for the physical. Frame, uh, what what does P F N stand for?
Physical frame number.
Physical frame number, uh, the upper five bits of a virtual address are used to index into a page directory. The page directory entry, the P D E, if valid, points to a page of the page table. Each page table page holds thirty two page table entries, each P T E, if valid, holds a desired translation. Physical frame number or P F N of the virtual page in question. The format of an eight bit P T E is valid. Uh, P F N six through P F N zero. Oh, I see, I see, the the valid bit and then the six through zero, so the valid bit. Is bit seven is what it's saying, right, or no, it's bit eight?
Uh, yeah, so in in hex, that's gonna show up like like in an eight.
Okay. I see, yep. Okay. You also know the P D B R points to page fifty one decimal. And the contents and memories are as follows. Oh, Jesus.
Uh, up at the top of your head, do you know what P D B R stands for?
I do not, um, I'm assuming this was in a.
Look that up, uh, when we look that up, I'm gonna put that in the dictionary file.
There's one reference of it in lecture eight.
Something base register.
It's probably page directory. Or that's some of my best guess, anyway, lecture eight has one reference P D B R. And then shortly after, it says which entry of the page directory.
So page directory base register. D B R, yeah. Uh, yeah, page directory base register.
Page directory base register, okay.
Let me add this to the.
So the virtual address is five for the offset, ten for the virtual page number. So. When accessing virtual address hex five C five B, what will be the first page accessed in? Decimal. So when it says.
Page five.
Five bits for the offset, right? We need to translate. This hex into binary to look at the bits?
Um. Yeah, okay, here, let me look back up at the top again. Virtual address, yeah, five bits for the offset.
Five is.
Table entry, so we have to, we are concerned about valid in the page table entry.
C is.
Situation where the hex calculator is gonna be really.
Is C twelve? A is ten, right? Okay. And then. B is eleven, so it's. Okay, so. First five. So I got the first five is zero one zero one one?
Um, I have the first five as. One one zero one one.
Okay, well, wait, hang on. Cuz five, five in binary is zero one zero one, right?
Zero one zero one is five in binary.
And then C we're saying is twelve, should be one one zero zero?
One one zero zero, yep.
So the leftmost bits, are you reading the rightmost bits or the leftmost bits?
Oh, I'm reading the rightmost bits.
Okay, I think we read left for right, so it should be, or no. You're right, five on the right, just cuz it goes to V P N and then the offset, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I am doing it backwards.
Okay, yeah, so and really what we're interested in first is finding this virtual page number. So we want to take the leftmost bits, but it's the leftmost.
Ten bits, so we got four. So that is zero one zero one, one one zero 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 one. And we wanna look.
There's one more trailing zero there, but.
Is there four, eight, nine, ten? Wait. Zero one zero one, one one, zero 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 one.
We're, wait, hold on, cuz we're um. We have a hex number, right, but we only have fifteen bits. So. That leftmost zero isn't real, it's not there. So we can chop that off.
I see. I see. Okay.
So if we cut that off, then it'll be. The leftmost ten or one zero, one one one, zero zero zero, one zero.
Okay, yep. Nice, okay, um, and then we are. Do we need to check if this is valid before we proceed?
Um.
No, that's on, that's on the physical page table entry, right?
Yeah, it's in the page table entry, there'll be a valid bit.
Okay, so here. So we got these.
Binary calculator out, cuz cannot be bothered to do that.
So we're we're trying to convert the these ten bits to a decimal number?
Yeah, so we want. Zero one. Alright, so in. In decimal. That is seven hundred and thirty eight.
We don't have seven hundred and thirty eight pages.
Yeah, so that should be an error that uh none of the above, because that isn't a real page number.
Okay, so we're saying eighty six. Is E, none of the above, let's just make, check it and make sure we're kind of on the right track here. It's this big ass thing. Yep, so it does say it's none of the above. Or no, dang, I'm looking at the wrong thing, uh. No, it says it should be B fifty one. Says write it as binary, regroup with five bits for offset, five for page table index, five for page directory index. So offset is one, one, zero, one, one.
We're treating it like there's one.
One. Yeah, there's two page tables, right, or how many did you say earlier?
Yeah, it's multi-level page tables, so with a two level page table.
Okay, so.
That's our issue.
How do we know that it should be broken into five even things?
That is a great question. I don't know. And I don't think it says very clearly.
No, it doesn't seem to.
I guess you, I mean, if if there's two, you must assume that you would split it in half. It makes, it it's logical, but. Let's see, and it also says.
Each page table holds thirty two page table entries is. Two to the fifth thirty two? I don't think it is, is it? Yeah, it is. So maybe that's how we decide.
All we're supposed to know, we're supposed to say there's two to the fifth there. So, okay. Uh, makes this number easier to calculate too, it's less mean.
Um, and so does it go? Let's see. And then the P T index. And then this is the.
So we're looking at twenty three. For the leftmost. And um. To for the rightmost page entries. So if you go to page twenty three.
So at the the P D index is the page we're looking at, or is it uh? Is it the P T index? No, it can't be the P T index, cuz that's only two. So the the P D index tells us the page to go to. As twenty three.
So the P D B R paint points to page fifty one. We go to page fifty one.
Oh, and it's just access. I'm so confused.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Access page directory indicated, X page directory first indicated with P D R. Okay, wait, so I think eighty, we're we're getting too far ahead of ourselves, I think it just says. That it points to page fifty one, so that's gonna be the page that gets accessed. And then for subsequent questions.
Access, yeah, so we just need to know that.
So it, we might not have that on the exam given to us, but for this one, it just tells us the first, like that the. We're going to page fifty one from the page directory base register.
What will be the index of the page directory access first? So the P D index is gonna be that first. Um, group of five bits, which is.
Which is twenty three in decimal, and what does it say to answer in hexadecimal?
Yeah, I want something hex, so twenty three in hex.
Should be seventeen in hex.
Yep.
So it's B.
Will be the second page accessed.
It's second page accessed, uh.
So I think then we need to go to page fifty one and look at entry twenty three. Which sucks cuz they're not in the grid.
Uh, yeah, it does kinda suck.
Although we know there's thirty two, so you can go from the right side.
Page. Fifty one, you said look at the twenty third thing?
Yep. Although it it it's it's gonna be zero indexed, right, so.
That's true.
Will be the twenty fourth if you're counting.
Jesus.
Did you get D six?
D six, yeah, that's that's twenty three in.
That for its valid bit.
Okay, um, so D six, D is thirteen, which is uh. One, one, zero, one. And if we're just looking at the seventh bit, that's one, right, so it'd be it'd be valid?
Yep, so it's valid, and then. Uh, it says, yeah, let me double check, it says valid and then. Alright, the rest of the bits specify that frame number, so. It'll be. On the zero.
Six.
Zero, that is. Decimal eighty six. The rest of those bits are decimal eighty six since it's valid, so that's uh. Hex fifty six.
Hex fifty six, which is. Hex fifty six, which is. Not there. Oh, no, wait, hex fifty six, that's, I was looking at the decimal numbers, that's D. Okay, so, um. How did, how did you know to go back to page? The page fifty one?
So since the, it's a multi-old page table, there's two, so the first page table is gonna point to another. So. Our index that we were looking at in page fifty one. Uh, since it's the first, since it was given to us, is where we need to find our second.
So that, so this thing points to another page table?
Yes.
Okay. And then. That had. A valid bit, and then the physical page numbers are the rest of them?
Yep. That's exactly it.
Okay.
And then, so the contents for this next question, we have to go to page eighty six, and we're gonna look at the second part of our virtual address that. Uh, corresponds to decimal two. Um, so on page eighty six. The second entry is, if you're zero indexed, uh, is E seven. So E seven, and that is C.
Okay, wait. How'd you know to look at E seven?
So because, uh, if you look at the virtual address we were given initially. Uh. That second part, those. So there's those, those leftmost five digits were twenty three. And then to the right of that, those next five digits.
Oh.
Those are two, so you'll get the second entry. Uh, zero, one, two, second entry in, uh, page table eighty six.
I see, okay, okay. So. The first one. Was. A thing that points to another page table than the page table index. Points to the page zero indexed in that page table. And then we're looking at. Uh. What is the? Final physical address of this page table, so the contents that correspond to. Zero E seven.
Uh, so we had, yeah, the contents of that page of one two were zero E seven, but then we also have this, that's what this, um. This base. From our virtual. Address comes in, I think. So we have.
The final physical address.
E seven.
Are we adding that to twenty seven decimal? E. We're doing E seven in binary, that should be fifteen. Right now, should be, should be fourteen. Seven, it's just, uh, zero. Do we just add the offset to the end of this?
Uh, but none of those are, um. None of those are answers. I don't think, E seven, what is the?
Oh, wait. Drop. Is this where the valid? It comes into play? One too far, because what does it say here? It says. The format of an eight bit PTE. And then it says. What are the contents of the corresponding PTE for eighty nine? So. This is the one where we're looking at the valid bit. So E seven. Is one, one, zero, and one, 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 zero, zero, one, 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 so the first bit is valid. And so we ignore, we ignore that bit, right? Like, it just means it's valid. And then we add the offset. From our original thing, which was twenty seven. Or like not add, but like concatenate, right?
So, okay, okay. Uh, the thing is, okay, so. Right, if we concatenate this, this. It'll be. One, one. Zero, one, one. That gives you. That gives you zero in hex, that gives you zero X, uh, CFB.
CFB.
If you stick those bits on the end there.
CFB, it is, yeah, so it's, it would be C if we concatenate them.
Yep.
Okay, so ninety is C, man. Yeah, I feel like this, this is gonna take a chunk of time on the exam.
It's gonna take a while. Definitely, I don't wanna have some sort of hex calculator if you're allowed to do that.
I might. I might peruse the exam right at the start, and if this is in there, I might just do this first and then go back to the true falses.
That's, that's not a bad idea. How many points are these worth each? Say, uh, these are two points. Honestly, I don't know.
Yeah, if there are only two points each, like, because they weren't the true falses, yeah, like, these multiple choice are two points. Uh.
Maybe go through and.
This, this. Part four, virtualizing memory, these true falses are worth three points, so, yeah, maybe it's not worth it to go and do this. Because they're not so worth substantially more points, and there's only. Eight questions.
The other thing to realize too, is she seems to be fairly generous with how she curves her exams, based on what I could tell, so.
Okay, that is good to know.
Being smart about it and just getting cool, and you should be fine.
Okay. Um. Right, so. We're doing ninety C. Ninety one, what are the contents, i.e. the value at the physical address, so. Final physical addresses, zero X CFB.
This is where we need to look at that VPN format. So it's two, it's seven bits, um. Seven bits for the. Hit for the physical page and then five for the offset.
Where's twelve bits? We have twelve bits here?
B.
So it'd just be the. One, zero, zero, one, 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 zero, one, one. We're just dropping the, the. Final leading bit. After we drop the other one, right? And that would give us. Or is that not right? How should I say it?
One, one plus.
No, five for the offset plus seven for the PFM twelve bits. Oh, no, we just need to look at seven. Not twelve. Offset goes to the right. So it's one, one, zero, zero, one, one, one.
So we need five bits, offset, and we need seven bits.
So. An offset goes on the right, so the seven bits on the left are the PFM.
Right, so that is one, one, zero, zero, one, one, one.
One oh three in decimal.
Sixty seven in.
Sixty seven in hex. Is, is that the answer? Or so what is the value at that physical address? Where do we go to that physical address?
I think it would be, okay, if this is right. And, okay, so it's base ten, sixty seven in hex base ten, so hundred and three, so we'd go to page a hundred and three. And we would. Then look at our offset. Which is. One, one, zero, one, one. Which is twenty seven.
Okay. Two, three. Oh, it should be minus five from the side, right? Should be fourteen? That is a, that is an option.
Yeah, fourteen. I'm thinking fourteen.
Okay, ninety one is A. Wait, is that ninety one? Yeah, ninety one is A. What did we say? We said, uh, ninety C. Okay, and ninety two. Uh, when accessing virtual address, zero X zero F A three, what are the contents at the corresponding physical address? Oh, man, do we just should go through and like do all this again?
Do it all again. I might do that one of my own time. I've gotta get going here soon.
Yeah, that's fair. All right. Cool.
All right, just have a real quick look at.
Yeah, what, uh.
So far, we did. All of that last post week, this can take forever.
Was, uh. Eighty six should be B, we got B. Eighty one should be B, or I mean eighty, eighty seven should be B, we got B. Eighty two should be D, we got D. Eighty, uh. Nine should be E. Wait. D. Eighty nine. Did I copy that down wrong? What did we say eighty nine? What are the contents of the PTE? Eighty nine should be C, I thi- I think we said C. I don't remember.
Oh, and it looks like for the last one that we didn't answer, you're gonna find that the valid bit wasn't set, so you don't have to do an entire trace.
Ah, okay, so. What are the contents, of course, I mean. Sweet. All right. Cool. Well, nice session.